"The news for you." And I said, "What?" He said, "You're going to Cincinnati." I said, "Peter, I'm not going to crack the line up over there."
"Frank Robinson, Vader President?"
That's right.
"Pick a break." "I can't crack this guy down in L.A." And I hung up. And then he called me back, saying, "Why did you do that?" He said, "You're going to join the team." So I hung up, my bag was packed.
Wow.
I'm on my way to Cincinnati, you know.
I gotta ask you, what gave you the strength to persevere? Is this something about family values? I mean, you came from a time and a place where even the idea that you could be a big league player was almost a fantasy.
Um...
Was it your mom or your grandfather?
My mom.
Mm-hmm.
My mom was a life soldier. She was a life soldier. She didn't meet any enemies and no strangers. If she did, we never knew about it.
Wow.
Okay? And we were a family of togetherness. I was the oldest child, we're fine.
Special responsibilities there, yeah.
But I learned early to help my brothers and sisters. Tell you a little story.
Sure.
I had a red wagon. And when my mother died at 101, her memory went all the way back. When I was 10 years old, she kept saying, "That little boy with the red wagon." "That little boy with..." And my sister children didn't understand it, and I told them. I had a red wagon, and my job was to carry it during the course of the summer when they had the big 25-blocks ice.
You bet.
I had to deliver the ice. I made money, and I gave it to my brothers and sisters. Up until the day, this day, today, I've always, whatever I had, I shared with my mom. My dad was there, but mostly my mom.
Right.
Okay then? And so if you get an opportunity to be in a position where you can help, it may not be fun there all the time.
Right. Well, of course, because I grew up on a television show, I try to explain to people, I have a very big idea of family.
Yes.
You know, for me, because I was in people's living rooms every Thursday night for years, so my idea of family is larger than that. But I want to talk a little baseball, because it's interesting you mention that about taking care of other people.
Yeah.
So many folks think that baseball is an individual sport, you know, it's just you against the pitcher, you against that fly ball. But the essence of a team is everybody caring everybody else.
Yeah. Well, back then, baseball was a specialty.
Yes.
Yeah, so when you had African-American ballplayers playing, and they were not considered to be qualified to play in what they could term the real major leagues, but then they found their own, okay?
Sure.
And it was something for me, it's because I had played three years, and I got released three years in a row. And the full time that I started out, I got released again. I wasn't a baseball player. I wanted to play basketball.
Right, now you played basketball high school.
Yeah.
Played basketball, too.
Went to college.
Uh-huh.
Went to college, so I thought I was going to be the first life player for the Kansas, for University of Kentucky. Never worked out. Never worked out.
Coach Rock.
Yeah. So it just so happened, Kansas City was in, my doctor was in town. And one of the persons that was on that team was a classmate of mine who played basketball, and he'd just come back from the Army. So he told Buck O'Neal, "Take me along and give me a chance to finish out the season."
Wow.
And from then on, it was history.
Yeah.
Of all the famous people that most of us know from those leagues, I knew all of them, but I didn't get a chance.
Right.
I got a chance to play with Satchel Bay.
Yeah, gotcha.
The biggest name, you know.
Yeah, he was. Josh Gibson, wasn't he?
Yeah, and Josh was there. I got a chance.
He was a big luther.
Right. I saw these, but it never stuck in that I was going to get a chance to play baseball. What I got a chance was to bring some extra money and be an athlete.
Right.
A new athlete, okay?
Yeah.
And so I had a good year. Made All-Star team. But after the season, the Chicago Cubs, all four players off of that team, Buck O'Neal, J.C. Hardman, Lou Johnson, and George Altman.
Half the time.
And we all went to the major leagues.
Half the time.
We all went to that, and Buck O'Neal become probably the first big managers, or I'll put it this way, one of the big scouts in baseball. You know, a lot of guys.
Right.
And from then on, I didn't look back.
Half the time. Well, you can make a life in baseball. When we come back, I want to talk about the special care that not only the Dodger family uses with its retired ballplayers, some of whom, let's face it, have some physical and mental issues that we have to help with. But how that sense of being known in your community helps you get out and bring a message to people to stay active and stay fit. And we'll get to that when we come back. So please, stay tuned to Aging in L.A. with Sweet Lou.
The biggest blessing in life is to realize your personal power.
So many of us wonder, "Why are we living?" Well, that's why we're living, to help others.
Community work brings families closer together.
When we help each other, we all get help.
Doing good for others, doing positive action, always comes back around and enriches your life.
It's the biggest gift you could ever give yourself.
Doing good is good for all of us.
Please join us in volunteering.
Improve your health by helping others. Visit iparticipate.org.
Hey, buddy! Don't you know you should never leave a cooking pan unattended? And a working smoke detector can warn you of a fire, like the one behind me! My hero!
Next time, listen to the ball. Have a smoke detector and a fire extinguisher at work.
How'd you know?
The ball calls.
Well, welcome back here with Aging in L.A. and our guest, Sweet Lou Johnson. We were just talking there briefly while our cameras were off and we were off doing our public service announcements about the sense of community and the need, not just for you personally, but the Dodgers as an organization, have been tied to this community, Los Angeles, since they got here in the late '50s.
That's true.
Talk to me a little bit about that when you get a chance to go out. Because you're talking to oldsters and youngsters.
I remember when my career was over, we went through a lot of changes, trying to, you know, to maintain, and it was horrible stories.
Sure.
But the Dodgers found me and gave me the necessity or the necessary ingredient to get back and put my feet flat on the ground.
Good.
And they put me in the community service. I didn't know nothing about that. I had no idea. And the thing that they wanted me to do, just so happened, they had a lady, but not Dr. Ruth Rich, who ran the program for Unified School District. And they needed somebody to go out and speak to kids, who better than the Dodgers?
Yeah, right, exactly.
And the subject matter that I had was drug abuse. That was it. And at that time, it was highlighted. So that's what I did. I went to the schools, I went to every school. I didn't know the Unified School District was there.
Yeah. We are second biggest.
Yes. And through that, it grew, because all of a sudden, we had another vehicle in the community, Lou Johnson, okay?
I gotcha.
And I went to all of the schools, and who better to talk about something? You know you, you know of me.
Yes.
I know me, know of you.
Right.
And if you put that together, it comes out as a great big ball of getting something together.
I am grateful. Well, you want to hear something scary? If we go back to the year that people most remember for you, scoring the one and only run when Sandy Koufax pitched a perfect game, 1965, those high school kids, they're 60 and up now.
Yes.
They're facing the very issues that this program was created to address, senior issues. We have grandparents raising their grandkids because their kids became so involved with drugs or alcohol.
Yeah, right.
And, you know, our prisons are full of people who lost their way, and they've left kids behind. And unless you have that sense of community where you say to someone, even a 75-year-old, "This is your family."
Yes, it is.
"This is somebody you're going to be called upon to care for."
That's right.
And I think there's a growing number of people in your position, certainly in my position, that say, "I've got to help people do this."
Let's go back to '65.
Sure.
'65 was a turmoil year for Los Angeles.
Yes, it was.
Know of that Watts-Ride.
You bet.
And I had just gotten here. We had John Roseburg, Gillian, Wills, myself, and Tommy was there, and Willie Davis.
And Willie Davis chewing that tobacco in center field. I still, it was like a toxic waste pit out there.
Yes, yes. And I had just met this, we all lived in the same community, South Central, they call it. And lo and behold, when the riots, everything closed down at Dodger Stadium.
Isn't that something?
We still played ball.
Yeah.
We still had the one commodity that could hold up all of the other things that was happening.
Right, kept the community together.
Yeah, but we had to come through the riots every night. We had to come up here and do this every night.
Yeah.
So you go back, now you come up to this day, people still know who are here, that older people that we are talking about, they remember the riots and Sweet Lou Johnson.
Isn't that something?
Okay? And I'm here to talk about this, still talk about that. So when you're talking about being blessed with age, it's good to have a story.
Yes.
And it's good to be a part of. And the part of is, my enjoyment is, I get a chance to be with people who recognize me, but I get a chance to be with people, to tell them how much I appreciate them.
Yes.
For coming to see me play. And now, all of a sudden, I'm not that guy at home plate. I'm not that guy sitting at the table talking to you, "Ooh, I don't want."
Yeah.
That's a good feeling.
You bet it is.
Okay?
And, you know, it's fun to watch it being repeated in various ways. I remember there was always some sort of reluctance to have a Latino ballplayer, you know, as a major league star.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, it's so funny to look out here in left field, they were here at Dodger Stadium.
Right.
And see Manny's little pavilion over there. But I can remember when Fernando Valenzuela erupted. There was nothing like a baseball star. In this country, a baseball star is a god.
Right. Well, I can only speak for the Dodgers.
Sure.
On the subject matter. Sandy Koufax was so great that I seen him get a game held up because the people were still trying to get in the park.
Yeah.
Okay then?
Yep.
Let's go a little further.
Yep.
After 1980.
Eighty, right.
When Fernando come here, same thing happened. The same identical thing happened with him. And he was not just a Los Angeles Dodger star, he carried the whole entire league.
That's right.
People in the other cities. He belonged to a league, not the Dodgers just benefited from that.
Yeah.
You know?
I remember, I will, I remember. I can remember my mom calling up and saying, "Have you seen him, bitch? Have you seen him? How does he do it looking up at the sky?"
Isn't that amazing?
And through the generations. It's baseball.
Yes.
And what a privilege for you to have been able to play in a game as important to this country as baseball.
I'm known for two hits. Two years of baseball, I got two hits.
Too big.
Too big, and all happened in a matter of months.
Right, isn't that something?
But then, he has the key to that. Those two hits has carried me through life.
Isn't that something?
Through life. Through life where I forget, "This doesn't matter anymore."
Yeah.
It's not a big deal anymore. It's a blessing for us to be around long enough to go from that part to this part and still be appreciated.
Yeah.
That's all we want. I don't care what, you can have all the money in the world, if you're not appreciated, if you're not appreciated, it doesn't matter.
Now, this, it's like a big pool of affection.
Yeah.
And respect.
Yeah.
You talk about two hits, now come on, it's game seven of the World Series.
That's one of the hits.
That's one of the hits, for sure. What do you think the other one was? Just getting on base with the pitchers pitching?
No, the other one was the perfect game.
Yeah.
That's right. I got the only hit and the only run.
Wow.
And it could have been a double, no hitter in one perfect game.
Wow.
Because the hit that I got was after we got the run. It was a walk, sacrifice to second, stole third.
An overthrow?
Yeah. That was it. And then we come up with the World Series. It was just my...
What was his name, Henley?
Bob Henley.
Bob Henley, that's it, yeah.
Yes.
Well, that was one of the, September 9th, 1965, probably 2 million people will swear to you they were in this stadium.
Yes, 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 that's true, that's true.
Funny, yeah, because those are signature moments, because as you said, '65 was a very turbulent year. I often try to tell people that that was kind of, 1966 was the last year of the Donna Reed Show, and there were half a million troops in Vietnam.
Yeah.
And it was drugs, sex, and rock and roll, and people were acting weird, and things changed.
Yes.
But life goes on, and what we discover is, baseball remains a powerful, powerful institution.
We go from baseball, here's one thing that I say. Sports is our nation's relief.
Yes, indeed. There's enough stress.
You know, you can go through a whole day of whatever you do, but then when you can come home and sit down, or come to Dodger Stadium now, and have a nice time, be a part of this, because we always maintain one thing, you're not on the outside, you're on the inside.
That's right. And it's always felt that way with the Dodgers, and they have been so much an integral part of our community.
Yeah.
And how grateful we are to the organization and through whatever changes, that they continue to produce wonderful men like you that are engaged and take yourself out into the community and say, "I have some lessons to share with you."
Yeah.
Now, is your family well? Are the kids, are things going? I know you lost your mom, but 101 years old, you're a lucky man.
Yep, so I got about 25 more to go. But you know what? My kids are doing well.
Good.
They own businesses and everything. They call me every now and then, and it's good, and they know they're still home.
This is not for me.
No, 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 no.
Oh, Lou, we've just flat run out of time.
Okay.
It is an absolute honor to have you here, and thank you for sharing with us these important lessons. You know what? He's off to serve holiday turkeys now. So we are so grateful that you took the time. And thank you, Dodgers, for sharing this incredible resource with those of us on Aging in L.A. And thank you, I hope you enjoyed this as much as I did.
Hey buddy!
Excuse me sir, ever hear of Navigate L.A.?
Uh-huh.
How would you like to have access to maps, mailing lists, sewer connections, construction permits, neighborhood councils, and much more?
Sure.
Step right on in. Are you ready?
Uh, sure, I guess.
Then welcome to Navigate L.A.
Nice man!
By logging on to navigate-la.lacity.org, you can have access to a wealth of information about your neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods. Imagine having the ability to see the construction taking place in your neighborhood.
Wow, it's like really being there!
Navigate L.A. gives you the start and completion date, cost, and contractor involved.
Nice!
You can even get a permit for your own building repairs, such as replacing a water heater, or reconstructing your own driveway. Now, you also have the ability to learn what current and future street psychics are going on in your neighborhood. There's a powerful mapping program which allows you to find a particular address or parcel number and get reports on that parcel, including zoning. You can even see what flood zones are in your neighborhood.
Oh hey, can I look up some secret information about my neighbor Joe?
No, only public information pertaining to parcel and zoning data. You can also look at the unique infrastructure feature of the neighborhood. Here, you can select specific areas and see what city facilities are in those areas, such as fire stations, parks, and much more. You can also locate council districts, including neighborhood councils.
Well, I gotta say, I am impressed!
But wait, there's more.
More?
You can select a specific area and let Navigate L.A. generate a mailing list for people living in that area. Just think of the possibilities, especially for neighborhood councils. They can generate a mailing list of people living in their neighborhood.
Wow, and is there more?
Ever wonder where the sewer lines are located?
Constantly!
Well, wonder no more. Navigate L.A. can provide you with locations and specifics.
Wow, I am completely sold. So where can I go buy Navigate L.A.?
Silly average Joe. It's a free service provided to you by the City of Los Angeles and the Bureau of Engineering.
Are we finished?
For more information, log on to navigate-la.lacity.org.
Lowkey item pickup? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm an ayahuasca yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Namaste.
Good morning, Los Angeles. Welcome to City Hall. City Council chambers, this is the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, June 23rd. Council meets three times per week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. All meetings are open to the public. For those who cannot make it to City Hall, meetings are televised via cable, Channel 35, or you can view us on the Internet. Also, we have locations in Van Nuys in San Pedro, where you can observe the meeting in video conference to our council chambers. This meeting is now in session. City Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacon, Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Corretz, Kucorian, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Rais, Rose, North, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. Ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First item of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Corretz.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Cardenas, seconded by Mr. Alacon.
Mr. President, do you wish to go through the regular agenda?
Let's do that at this time, please.
First item on the agenda, item one is confirmation of the assessment for the San Fernando Road groundwater improvement, and that is not for public hearing, and there is a card on that matter.
Call that special.
Items two through fifteen are items for which public hearings have been held. Item three is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Please hold that.
And council should have twelve members today. Do you wish to hold all the ordinances?
From four through twelve, ordinances, please hold. From two to fifteen, any specials, colleagues?
There is no action required on item two today.
Alright, next items, please.
That does leave items thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. I understand there's a technical amendment to be made later on item thirteen. Do you wish to call that special?
Hold that special.
So that does leave council now, items fourteen and fifteen.
Fourteen and fifteen, I think we have twelve now. We now have twelve members present. Mr. Wesson?
Item thirteen, I'd like to make a technical correction to the report to reduce the number of off-site liquor licenses from three to two.
Very well, without objection. That's accepted. We now have twelve members present, Mr. Clerk, so let's take those items... On the, um, we're doing fourteen and fifteen?
So that would now include items four through fifteen.
Four through fifteen, any specials, colleagues? Items four through fifteen, seeing none? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next items, please.
Items sixteen through twenty-eight are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Sixteen through twenty-eight, Mr. Parks?
I'd like to call twenty-eight special and ask it to be out of order. We have some Olympic guests here today.
Alright, we will do that right after we do CD fourteen. We'll do that, uh, we'll do the CD, number twenty-seven first, then we'll do number twenty-eight after that. Any other specials, colleagues, on those items, seeing none?
Mr. President, there are cards on item seventeen and nineteen in that section.
Seventeen, nineteen, special, Mr. Smith? Alright, he's waiting for the next group, okay? So open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next items, please.
On the continuation agenda, item twenty-nine is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Twenty-nine, special, for Mr. Smith?
Items thirty and thirty-one are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, and there are cards on both of those matters.
Special on thirty and thirty-one, then.
That now takes council back to the items called special.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, item fourteen, forthwith, please.
Number fourteen, for Mr. Smith, forthwith. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Okay, we will do our two presentations. Our first one from CD fourteen, item number twenty-seven. Mr. Weezer?
Well, good morning, colleagues. I'm very happy to be here this morning with my colleague Tony Cardenas to make a very special presentation to declare June twenty-third as Don Pedro Rivera Day in the city of Los Angeles. And given that the city of Los Angeles has the second-largest number of Mexicans in any city in the world, next to Mexico City in Mexico, it is appropriate that here in the city of Los Angeles, we honor and give respect to those who have established themselves in this country and continued the musical traditions and the Mexican culture here in the city of Los Angeles. And colleagues, today, I am honored to give the Rivera family, and each one of them could perhaps have a day named after them in the city of Los Angeles, given their career trajectories. I'm honored to be standing here today with the Rivera family, Gustavo, Rosie, Juan, Pedro Junior, Lupillo, and Jenny Rivera. For those of you who follow Mexican music and are aware of their performances, these are individuals that, as a family and as individuals, sell out arenas and continue to be in the top of the charts in Billboard and many others who continue to follow that. So, let me tell you a little bit about Don Pedro Rivera, the man who started it all. And he represents the embodiment of achievement in the American dream, having immigrated to the United States in 1966 from Sonora, Mexico. Don Pedro Rivera Cervantes is a composer, actor, producer, and most importantly, the head of the most successful and well-regarded musical family in Latin music. Pedro Rivera and his children are popular both here and in Mexico, selling out arenas, reaching the top of the charts, and inspiring others through their music. In 1988, Don Pedro established his own independent recording company under the name Cintas Aquario, where he launched the musical careers of such musicians as Chalino Sanchez, El Chapo de Sinaloa, who was here this past year, Los Razos, and Los Canelos de Durango, among others. His musical legacy will live on in the hearts of his children as well as those who are inspired by his message of persistence, hard work, and leading with your heart. Ladies and gentlemen, I ask you to join me in declaring today Don Pedro Rivera Day in the city of Los Angeles. Felicidades! Es un gran placer.
I am Pedro Rivera. Estoy muy agradecido de haber nacido en la República Mexicana.
I am Pedro Rivera. I'm very happy to have been born in the Mexican Republic.
Agradezco a todo el público, a todo el apoyo de los hispanos para mi familia. Gracias a Dios, logramos hacer una gran familia.
I thank all the Hispanic public for the support that they have given me through the years. We made efforts to have a great family.
Fue un procedimiento muy duro, muchísimo sufrimiento desde 1964 por primera vez que llegué a los Estados Unidos.
It was a really hard work for me, from the first time I arrived in the United States in 1964.
En 1966, el 19 de abril, crucé por segunda vez el día que murió Javier Solís.
In June of 1966, I crossed again the day that Javier Solís died.
1968, llegamos otra vez a la ciudad de Culver City.
In 1968, we arrived again at the city of Culver City.
Y estoy muy agradecido con Dios, estoy muy agradecido con este gran país que nos dio la oportunidad de ser lo que estamos ahorita.
And I am very thankful to that, very thankful to this country that gave us the opportunity to be what we are right now.
Todos mis hijos han sufrido bastante para llegar al punto donde se encuentran, pero me siento muy complacido porque han sido muy fuertes y persistentes.
All of my children have really suffered to get to where they are, but I feel very pleased because they have been very persistent in their achievements.
Agradezco a toda la República Mexicana, a todos los medios del mundo por el apoyo que nos han dado. Que Dios me los bendiga, y me siento muy complacido por ser las personas que están todos ustedes y toda mi familia.
I really thank you for all the support that you have given me. I thank the Mexican Republic and the whole world for having given us this opportunity, and I feel very pleased to be here with you.
Y esta es una muestra para todos los mexicanos. Es un ejemplo para todos nosotros, que todos los que sufrimos no nos dejemos caer, porque de que se puede, se puede.
And this is just a sample, so that we don't fall, and we achieve what we want because whenever we say that we can, we can.
Muchísimas gracias.
Si se puede.
Mr. Labonge, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Weezer?
Bueno, aquí tenemos felicidades, y aquí tenemos dos, tenemos casi más o menos cuatro concejales de raíces mexicanas en el Consilio. Ahorita van a decir unas palabras, y primeramente con Tony Cardenas, que sus padres son de Jalisco, de Jalisco.
We have four council members that have roots in Mexico, and they are going to say a few words under your honor.
Gracias, thank you very much. I'm gonna speak a little bit in Spanish, a little bit in English first. I'd like to say something in Spanish. Quiero dar las gracias y agradecer a la familia Rivera y el señor Rivera por todo lo que han hecho para ellos y para este país. Me da mucho orgullo para ver esta familia tan exitoso, pero en el mismo tiempo quedan tanto a la comunidad. Yo tengo un amigo que conoce a Jenny Rivera, y él me dijo que Jenny quería hacer algo para mi comunidad, y le llamamos a Jenny, y inmediatamente ella dio los fondos para dar uniformes para niños que no tienen fondos para tener sus uniformes para ir a la escuela. Y ella lo hizo, pero lo que me dio mucho gusto es ver las familias teniendo tanto, tanto amor para ella. Y para mí, ellos querían ver a ella más que recibir la ropa. I just wanted to say that this is a wonderful, beautiful family. I have a mutual friend who knows Jenny Rivera, who's the daughter of Mr. Rivera who just spoke, and she had expressed to my friend that she wanted to give back to the community.
It's also a privilege to stand here immediately after the illustrious Rivera family, though I promise not to sing. The, the, Olympic Day is celebrated all around the world. This is the second year in which we here in Los Angeles, through the action of this council, have proclaimed this Olympic Day in Los Angeles. It's tremendously important to us that you do so. We have, since that '87 vote, we have enjoyed unanimous support of city council in every Olympic endeavor in which we have engaged, and that is critical in our being acknowledged as the most Olympic city in this nation for sure, and indeed, perhaps the most Olympic city in, in the world. We had a visit just a month ago from the mayor of Lausanne, Switzerland, where the IOC is headquartered, and he acknowledged our Olympic preeminence. So your action today is important in continuing that. I firmly believe that the next time the Olympics come to this nation, and they will, they will come here, and it's with your support that that's true. David Simon and I, who, who shared the leadership of the Southern California Committee for the Olympic Games, have the particular honor of introducing two of the people about whom the Olympics really are. They're not about the rest of us, they're about the athletes, and their courage and their performance, and they are heroes to...
It's hard for me to receive something like this. There's not a person on earth that I admire more than my father. He's the most decent and hardest working man that I know. And I say it with great honor that I'd like to be half of what this man has been in his life. From being an illegal immigrant, then being deported, to having his day here with you guys. And for you give my father, forget the family, my father this attention. Because he's the one that deserves this. He's the one that made all of this. I admire this man so much, and he deserves this and so much more. Thank you very much.
Pedro Rivera Junior.
Well, um, it's dangerous to give a microphone to a preacher. I'm a pastor. So, I'm the pastor of the family, so it's just an honor to receive this, um, this special day, uh, Don Pedro Rivera Day in Los Angeles. Um, I just, uh, it's just so many things that we've gone through as a family. I remember when we came here, um, my dad didn't have any money, he didn't have a car or license. And I remember one day when my dad took me to school on a sansfeet. And now to see something like this, th- this has got to come from God in this very great, special country. This, uh, great people here. We love you all, and, uh, may just our Lord bless every single one of you with peace, with love, and with, uh, all this special blessing that you guys have given us. Love you both.
Thank you very much. As you can see, it's a very special family that has overcome a lot to be one of the most successful families in the Latin American music business. So now with some last words, the honorary for today, Don Pedro Rivera, for some last words.
Gracias a todo el mundo. Quiero agradecer especialmente a tres personas que hicieron posible esto. Uh, tengo...
Thank you for today. I want to thank especially three people who made this possible today.
Hace dos meses conocí a mi manejador, se llama Alex Enriquez.
After two months ago, I got to know, uh, ¿cómo se llama?
Mi manejador, Alex Enriquez.
His driver, Alex Enriquez.
Eh, manager.
Manager, manager.
A Alex Enriquez le agradezco de todo corazón porque en solamente dos meses, eh, se movió todo lo, todo lo que él pudo para conseguir este día de Pedro Rivera en conjunto con la señorita Daisy Larios.
Wanted to thank him because he made this happen very, very quick, and he also wanted to thank Daisy Larios.
Y una persona clave que ayudó a todo esto, al señor Francisco Rivera.
And a key person to this, Francisco Rivera.
Agradezco a todo el mundo, agradezco a todas las personas, agradezco a Dios por lo que nos ha regalado, y Dios bendiga a toda la República Mexicana y a todos los Estados Unidos. Muchas gracias.
Congratulations to the Rivera family. Thank you, Councilmember Weezer. On the item, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Very well, thank you. It is now official. Our next presentation by Councilmember Parks. Councilmember Parks. Number twenty-eight.
Best, Jan Perry and Mr. Labanze, come up. Colleagues, this is a very special day, and we have a number of people that are here to participate in an acknowledgement of the hundred and first anniversary of the founding of the modern Olympics. As you know, uh, with this day on, an annual event, June twenty-third, there's over a hundred and sixty countries, uh, doing a similar, uh, memorial as relates to this particular event. This city was fortunate enough to have the Olympics in nineteen thirty-two and again in nineteen eighty-four, and we remember the glow in the city for those number of years after nineteen eighty-four. Today we join Mr. Labanze and also Jan Perry to talk about this issue, and then we'd have Mr. Barry Sanders and Dave Simon from the L.A. Sports Council come up, make some comments. But we have some very special guests. We have two prior Olympians that are here with us today to also participate in this event. So let me ask Ms. Perry to come up, and then, Tom, make sure you have your maps with you when you come up.
Yes, one for everybody, one for everybody. Thank you, Mr. Parks, and I'm just pleased to stand here with two extraordinary athletes and a number of people here who are a part of the Olympic movement to celebrate Olympic Day, to mark the significance of it on a global basis, and to express my gratitude that the Coliseum, which is located between my district and in Mr. Parks's district, uh, still continues to thrive and to grow and adapt to new opportunities. The Coliseum is held near and dear by many of the constituents in South L.A. for its history, for the people that it has produced, for the games that it has witnessed, and so I think it's only fitting that we stand together to remember this day and to use it as a moment to teach others about the Olympic movement.
Ms. Perry, Mr. Parks, this is what Los Angeles is all about. Many great things are in our history, but you think in this chambers, in the late twenties, in the early thirties, they discussed the coming of the thirty-two Games. And then in the seventies, when there was a cloud over the Olympic movement, leadership by a majority of eight to seven voted for the Olympic Games. It wasn't all unanimous then, because there was all these challenges. And that movement, the Olympic movement, that brought such greatness to Los Angeles is so key. And I want to remember the late, great Tom Bradley and his leadership, and the late, great John Feral, who sat here, who, when the vote was up in the air, he took the council file and put it in his desk drawer and let it stew there for a while until the votes came together in that great light on Los Angeles. But behind me are two great Olympians who worked very, very hard. There's more Olympians in Southern California than any other place in the world. And this morning at the Home Depot Center in Carson, there's a special Olympic program for the L.A. Eighty-four Foundation. I'm pleased, along with Mr. Parks, to have our Olympic maps that tell the history of the Games in Los Angeles, both in thirty-two and eighty-four, that are distributed, and also our sister cities, which so many Olympic Games have been held in our sister cities. But I got to turn it back to Mr. Parks, and I want to... Okay, but I want to thank Mr. Parks, who is a constant champion for the great Memorial Coliseum. Give Mr. Parks a big hand right now. And another champion, Barry Sanders, who was there in eighty-four.
Thank you. It's, it is a privilege and an honor to appear before you. It's also a privilege to stand here immediately after the illustrious Rivera family, though I promise not to sing. Uh, the, the, Olympic Day is celebrated all around the world. This is the second year in which we here in Los Angeles, through the action of this council, have proclaimed this Olympic Day in Los Angeles. It's tremendously important to us that you do so. Uh, we have, since that H-seven vote, we have enjoyed unanimous support of City Council in every Olympic endeavor in which we have engaged, and that is critical in our being acknowledged as the most Olympic city in this nation for sure, and indeed perhaps the most Olympic city in, in the world. We had a visit just a month ago from the, the mayor of Lausanne, Switzerland, where the IOC is headquartered, and he acknowledged our Olympic preeminence. So your action today is important in continuing that. I firmly believe that the next time the Olympics come to this nation, and they will, they will come here. And it's with your support that that's true. David Simon and I, who, who shared the leadership of the Southern California Committee for the Olympic Games, have the particular honor of introducing two of the people about whom the Olympics really are. They're not about the rest of us, they're about the athletes and their courage and their performance, and they are heroes to all of us. I have the privilege of introducing Janai Kerr. In two thousand and four in Athens, I got to see him playing water polo and playing it superbly. Uh, he has continued to represent this nation on our water polo team as recently as April in Hungary. Uh, Janai Kerr is one of those great Southern California Olympians. Janai, please say a few words.
I just want to thank everybody who take the time to recognize such a great event. Obviously, the Olympics, to me, is so meaningful, and to be a part of something that's so great and bigger than myself has been absolutely amazing. A little bit about myself, I was born here in Los Angeles, my father's from Jamaica, and I wasn't even till, it wasn't until fifteen years old in high school, my sophomore year, that I even knew what the sport of water polo was. So basically, I'm trying to relate to the kids out there that really are our future. You can accomplish anything, okay? As long as you keep your grades up, you try hard, you stay dedicated, you'll be able to accomplish anything you want to do. With that being said, everyone's, you know, putting a lot of emphasis on the, on the economy and things like that, you don't have to invest money, okay? I'm not going to encourage any adults to go back to Olympics, but you can, you can definitely influence kids. You can spend time with them, you can encourage them to really chase their dreams and become great, great individuals and continue on to basically represent our country at all levels. Um, with that being said, I guess I just want, one more quick thing. We start our organizational Olympic Academy where other Olympic athletes, myself, are able to go and share our experiences, some of our mistakes, some of our success, and encourage younger kids as well. Uh, once again, I thank everybody here for representing our country and our great city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
And I have the privilege of introducing our other Olympian guest this morning. First, as Tom Labanze mentioned, we could have filled up the room this morning with Olympians who live in the Los Angeles area. We, there are literally hundreds of them and more, we believe, than in any other country, any other city in the world. So the Olympians here today are representing all of our Olympians from Southern California. And the man to my left is one of the heroes of the Los Angeles Olympic Games, a double gold medalist in diving in nineteen eighty-four here, also a double gold medalist in Seoul four years later in nineteen eighty-eight. Uh, please welcome Greg Luganis.
Thank you very much. I have to say, thank you. The Olympic movement, I mean, it crosses so many, so many barriers. Um, you know, once you get to the, the best in the world, then it doesn't matter what country you're from, you know, this is an international movement. Um, I'm a gay man living with HIV, um, but before that, I'm a person, and also I'm an American. I had the privilege of competing in, uh, three Olympic Games. Nineteen seventy-six, I was a silver medalist in Montreal, and nineteen eighty, there was the boycott, and then, uh, to be here in nineteen eighty-four, it was such a privilege to be in Los Angeles, being born and raised in Southern California. Um, it's a, it was a proud time to be here. And I remember in the finals of the men's ten-meter platform, um, Mayor Tom Bradley comes in after we did a few dives, and I said, "You're late." He said, "I know, I'm sorry." You know, and it was just such a wonderful, wonderful memory of mine. And, um, and also I had the privilege of competing in the nineteen eighty-eight Olympic Games in Seoul, Korea, where I hit my head on the board and had a little accident there, but I was able to come back and become victorious and, uh, be here. And, uh, it's, it is important. I mean, our youth is important. Um, like what was said earlier, if you can't, you know, you don't have the money, the economy's tight, spend the time with kids, give them your time. They, they, they need that time, they need that encouragement, they need the encouragement to get away from the, the TVs and the computers and get active, because that's our future. Um, and we all would like to see America be successful at the Olympic Games. Thanks.
Good job, Greg. Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Parks, Mr. Rosendahl for comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Greg and the other great swimmer, two of the greatest swimmers in the world, but Greg, I just want to single you out for a second. We had a little conversation on the side as two openly gay men. Uh, when you came out to the public with HIV in ninety-four, ninety-five, you once again were an incredible role model, a superstar, a hero, somebody people looked up to, and now to have that identification. It took courage, um, but you saved lives by doing that, and you made a statement to the rest of the world. So God bless you and thank you all very much.
We do have a card, Mr. Parks, from Mr. Walsh, so we'll let you complete, conclude. Now we'll have it here for Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh will wave. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Okay. In behalf of the City Council, I'd like to present this to the L.A. Sports Council and say, "Keep up the good work, and we look forward to a future Olympic in the city of Los Angeles."
And while we take the photo, Mr. Cardenas for comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank all of you for continuing to remind us, not only once every four years, but every day of our lives, what is so special about the Olympics and how it brings people together, and also it allows people to really strive to be everything that they choose to be and everything that they would love to be. Uh, Mr. Luganis, when I saw you growing up, I was growing up watching you on that diving board over and over and over again, it seemed like it was the epitome of what you enjoyed doing, because you did it so well, and you did it in a way that was just incredibly inspiring. I do think of, when I think of athletes, the, the, the top athletes that I, that come to mind, that I enjoyed watching in my lifetime, I think of you and a small handful of others. But one thing that I would like to thank you for doing is, I would like to thank you for being who you are and talking the way you talk, especially most recently in your life, because a lot of people choose to impose on people, especially when they love to see somebody do the work that they do, they choose to impose their values on them, and they deny themselves the opportunity to really see who you are. And most recently, you have been saying who you are as a person, what you enjoy, what you are, how you are, et cetera. And the one thing that I enjoy about that is, we need to teach our children to do that earlier in life, because too many of us wait too late in life to just say, "This is who I am, this is how I am, I'm a beautiful person, I'm a wonderful person, I'm a giving person, I'm a caring person, and I'm a dedicated professional." And you are all of that. Thank you so much, and I just have one, one request for you. Please don't leave, because I got to take a picture with you. I got, this, Mr. Parks, Mr. Parks, you have made my day, my week. I never thought I would meet Greg Luganis. Thank you for bringing him today. I got to take a picture with you, okay? Thank you. And I wish I had my family here, because if they don't know who you are, my children don't know who you are, because they're a little young. But if my children were here, we'd all take a picture with you.
All right. Mr. Labanze.
And members, just a shout-out to Louis Zamperini, who was the oldest Olympian, still living in the thirty-six Games. He was fifteen when he went over to the Games in Berlin, and you all know his son Luke, who's the great superintendent for building and safety, a little City Hall connection. Last shout-out to Dr. Sammy Lee, who the other night with Barry and David Iall together, he was introduced, and you know Sammy Lee.
He turns ninety.
He turns ninety. Right here in August, we're going to have a Sammy Lee Day, but he got up and introduced himself, tradition, and said, "Sammy Lee, forty-eight Games, basketball."
Thank you, Mr. Labanze.
He was kidding. Thank you. Let's hear it for the Olympics!
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, item number fourteen, fourth width.
Mr. President, still need a vote on item twenty-nine.
Oh, on this item. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Thank you. Um, item fourteen, fourth width, please, and let's take item number two next. I'm sorry, number three.
And that is the appointment of Ms. Jane Paul to the Green retrofit development advisory council.
Number three, please. Commission appointee. Is the commission appointee here? Please take the table, the center table, around the rope, the center table. Sarge Arms will help you come by. Mr. Wesson, on this commissioner, under your committee.
Oh, oh, yes. We had a, a meeting this morning, we had an opportunity to meet Ms. Paul. Uh, one of the things that I liked the most about her is, uh, she gives a presentation where you have to really search your mind to come up with a question for her. It was very thorough, she brings a lot of expertise, uh, a lot of energy. I'm really proud of this advisory commission, and I think she's going to be a tremendous asset. So I'm just thankful that you're willing to serve.
My pleasure, I'm honored to, thank you.
Thank you. Um, we don't see anyone else on the queue, which means it'll be an easy vote for you. Colleagues, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Thank you. Commissioner, you're confirmed, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Uh, Mr. Clerk, eight, sixteen, and eighteen, fourth width, please. Eight, sixteen, eighteen, fourth width. Mr. Smith.
Yes, can we take item twenty-nine out of order so that the chief can get back to work?
We, um, we're going to take that right now. Mr. Clerk, number twenty-nine, please.
Called special by Councilmember Smith.
Number twenty-nine is up before us, Mr. Smith.
Yes, uh, very briefly, Agent General, what you have before you is a report from the Public Safety Committee dealing with the photo red light enforcement program. Uh, this requires an exemption because of the Arizona policy of the council. I can only tell you this, our options today are two. One, we can accept the, uh, the extension of the contract. The contract with the company that ATS that took over for the bankrupt Nestor Company is the company that is currently operating the system. Uh, they are in Arizona. That is an issue for some of you, I understand. But the options are this, if we do not extend the contract today and for the rest of this year, uh, we will turn off the system in Los Angeles. All sixty-two intersections that are currently photo red light will be offline until a new contract is issued to the RFP. The RFP is going forward, this is the approval of the RFP, for the LAPD to issue an RFP to hire a contractor, who that may be is undetermined. But what is before you today is whether or not we continue the photo red light program or we stop it because of the policy this council has already passed. Um, so the issue is not the Arizona issue, the issue is whether we're going to extend the contract for the existing company, ATS, who took over Nestor when they went bankrupt. Um, I would point out that Mr. Zine did a great job of pointing out that Nestor was not financially able to complete the contract. There were some of us that opposed the contract, but it went forward. Uh, that company did go bankrupt, ATS has assumed the company in bankruptcy, and they are the contractor of record. And so what you have today is the extension of the contract through the rest of this year until the RFP can be put out and brought back to this council for a new contractor or the existing contractor, whoever wins the bid. So all that is before you today is, do you want to extend the contract or do you want to shut the system off? That is really the, before you today, and that is what's being brought to you by the Public Safety Committee. I will answer questions if necessary, the chief is here, Chief Opoli and Sergeant McQuillie to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Smith, you mentioned sixty-two, I think it's thirty-two.
Pardon me?
Thirty-two locations, you mentioned sixty-two. For correction, I think it's thirty-two locations.
Thirty-two.
Yeah, you mentioned sixty-two, it's thirty-two.
I think there was a, a plan to go forward for that.
All right, Ms. Hahn.
Yeah.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, yeah, I was going to correct you, say it's, I believe it's only thirty-two intersections. Um, I, does somebody from LAPD want to come up and, and, um, answer this question, some of these questions? And let me just put your mind at rest, Mr. Smith. Uh, I am, don't have a problem with extending this contract for ten months. I think it is certainly within, uh, the guidelines of the policy decision that this council voted on, so I don't have a problem with this. Um, I think, though, this brings up, uh, it kind of helps shed light, so to speak, on the red light camera, uh, program in the city of Los Angeles. Uh, when I began investigating this, it was very disturbing to me, uh, that the city's actually losing money, uh, on this contract. I think it has to do with the fact that we're unable to collect some of the fines, um, that have been issued. So I don't like the fact in these tough financial times that we're actually losing money on what I think is not always a positive outcome on some of these intersections. In fact, um, out of the thirty-two intersections that have red light cameras, I don't think, I think some of them actually have had increased traffic collisions, um, at those intersections. Uh, it, do you know if that's true or not?
Yeah, Councilmember Hahn, first of all, let me, some of you may not know our subject matter experts, and before we start and answer your question, let me introduce Sergeant Matt McQuillie. Uh, he is the photo red light coordinator, also his partner for the last several years, Mr. Glenn O'Gurl from DOT. Now Glenn's retired, but has volunteered his time to come back and see this process through. Sergeant McQuillie has done extensive research and has a number of, of data, uh, that will talk about both points. Um, the CAO has also looked at the revenue issue, um, and I believe...
Has looked at the what?
The revenue issue that you're talking about with respect to court, et cetera. So with that, I'm going to turn that over to Sergeant McQuillie to address both issues, please.
Thank you, chief. First of all, I'd like to point out what the goal of the photo red light program is, and that is to reduce serious injury and fatal traffic collisions caused by motors who fail to stop for red lights, and it's also to maximize police resources. To, uh, answer your first question regarding the, the cost of, of, of the program, based on the CEO's report, it says that the photo red light program was not making any, any money. It didn't...
Say that again.
The CEO's report that was prepared indicated that the photo red light was not raising any money.
And in fact, it's a net loss of three hundred thousand dollars annually.
But the report didn't include unpaid citations. We have approximately fifty thousand unpaid citations out, still out there that haven't been paid, all right, by traffic violators, which would raise approximately another five point nine million dollars for the city of Los Angeles. That would bring the, the program from being in the red to being...
Right, but historically, as we found out through budget crisis, that's one of our most difficult problems in the city, is collecting, uh, whether it's traffic fines or any other kind of fine. We, we, we don't have a good track record there.
Uh, yes, however, people are going to have to pay, eventually pay. Um, when people don't, um, pay a photo red light citation, what happens is a hold is placed on their car and their license, and they can't renew their license or renew their registration until, all right, they take care of that, you know, outstanding unpaid traffic citation.
Do you know how much the fine is for running a red light as caught on this camera? What the fine is?
Well, the fine, as of June tenth, just a couple of weeks ago, the fine increased from four hundred and forty-six dollars to four hundred and sixty-six dollars. Out of that, the shitty share is approximately a hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
And the rest goes to the state?
It's broken up between the, the County of Los Angeles and the State of California, with the big boat going to the state.
So basically, we have a program that might give minimal public safety at these, at these only thirty-two intersections out of forty-three hundred intersections, I think, that have cameras. So we're basically, uh, giving the state and the county more money, and in fact, we've got a net loss in the city of three hundred thousand dollars a year. Why is this a good program?
Well, once again, if the cameras are turned off at the end of the month, okay, and the contract comes to an end, the city's already paid the photo red light contractor for their services. So that means that the city gets a hundred percent of that money without having to pay the contractor anything. So the city, it's a net gain for the city.
But going forward, why is this a good program?
First of all, it's a traffic safety program, like I mentioned before. We did a traffic study, and we looked at traffic collisions six months prior and six months after, and one of the things that we noted, okay, that, uh, there was a thirty-two percent decrease in red light-related traffic collisions at all thirty-two intersections.
Was there an increase in traffic collisions at some of the intersections?
Yeah, there, there were.
Yes, there was.
Okay, we showed that basically twelve intersections, there were, uh, one or two additional traffic collisions, okay? Uh, with the exception of two intersections that increased by five collisions. But when you look at, uh, over a twenty-four hour period...
I think it's kind of a mixed bag, I think it's...
Thank you, Ms. Hahn, you want to push your button again, please? Uh, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, folks. What I, uh, wanted to emphasize that when we introduced the Arizona, uh, motion, I made it very clear that we as a body need to be methodical, need to understand the impacts of this action, that in no way did I want... of this action, that in no way did I want to hurt Angelino's, Los Angeles, or our, uh, city government. Uh, Councilman Zine, would you mind helping me out with the environment?
Mr. Reyes, Sergeant Arms, Sergeant Arms, there's all the staff speaking, and it's difficult to hear the council member. We need you to quiet down the staff on both sides of the chambers.
Right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Staff, you're going to have conversations. Please have them very quiet so you don't disturb the meeting. Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I will be supporting this extension because I know we find ourselves in circumstances where one company goes bankrupt, the other company inherits the business, it happens to be in Arizona, and we're going to let this play out in terms of finishing this contract. That's what I'm understanding, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But it does beg the question, and this is where I think we need to do a little bit more soul searching as to how we use our resources as a city. You know, we are a social service provider, and we look at the jobs we create. We should be understanding our resources and how we multiply that benefit. So if it's our discretion to pick companies and choose companies, one of the underlying factors should be, how does it create jobs in this area? How does it stimulate our capacity as an economic development engine to provide social services for our respective, uh, city, if not region? So from that point of view, when we run this next RFP, uh, how can we weigh that level of benefit without breaking any laws or seeming inherently biased so that we don't get sued by any one competitor for the way this process is unfolding? So I want to make sure we stay within the guidelines of the law, but also understand that we have this incredible opportunity to create jobs, to stimulate the kinds of environments where, as Father Greg Boyle has always said, nothing stops a bullet better than a job. Why aren't we moving in that direction? And that would be my question to you as I close.
Well, I, I think, and let me make one other introduction. We have with us, uh, city attorney from City Attorney's Office, Terry Martin Brown. She was instrumental in helping us craft this RFP. And I think what you're asking, Councilmember Reyes, this is more of a legal question, which I'm going to defer to Terry Martin Brown, uh, just based on what you said. We don't want to get sued. We don't want to get ourselves caught short, and I think she would probably be in the best position to answer that question.
But we should be opportunistic with our discretion in how we use our resources.
Terry Martin Brown, Assistant City Attorney. Good morning. We will certainly be looking at Councilmember Reyes's considerations as we move forward, as the ordinance is developed, uh, and in crafting or tweaking this RFP any further if necessary. And I don't know if it's already been mentioned or not, but, um, the current contractor actually, I, I believe, does have an office here in California and does employ some Californians.
Yes, uh, just to expand about it or back up just a little bit. Back in November of two thousand and five, when the city council approved Nestor Traffic Systems as the new photo, photo red light contractor for the city, Nestor Traffic Systems was based in Providence, Rhode Island. However, they had, uh, West Coast office located in San Diego. As a result of that contract, Nestor agreed to honor the terms of the contract and shut down their West Coast office in San Diego and relocated it to San Diego. And that was to support our program, support our program with the, the processing and, and field techs. Since that time, obviously, um, Nestor has filed for bankruptcy and was purchased by ATS. And as a result, uh, they closed the Los Angeles office, but they relocated two offices here in Los Angeles County. They have one in Burbank where we have eighteen processors that live and work here in the Los Angeles area that work on our program on a daily basis. We also have the Santa Fe Springs office where we have six field techs that are also responsible for, um, the maintenance of our, of, of the cameras. And so we have twenty-four, uh, employees here in the Los Angeles County area that work for ATS that are supporting our photo red light program.
And just in closing, the bottom line I'm trying to reach is that as we go through our decision-making, we have a four billion dollar budget. We're a major economic development engine in this region. I would hope that we could start understanding the multiplier effect when we look at how we assess these contracts, and I would hope that would predilate throughout all the departments and not just what is the, the least costly, but we should be looking at how this area benefits in terms of jobs, job generators, and environments for stimulating new industries. And that's the message I'm trying to emphasize here.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Alakon. Mr. Labonte, for introduction quickly.
Please welcome the Good Time Travel Club from Southern California, John Doherty is a leader, lives in the thirteenth district. Welcome the seniors from Southern California.
Good Time Travel Club, welcome to City Hall. Thank you. Mr. Alakon.
Yes, Mr. Reyes, first of all, let me say that yesterday, uh, the jobs committee considered a motion by Perry that was introduced a year and a half ago to, uh, create a local, uh, preference in contract administration. So the appropriate discussion to have is with contract administration because they implement all the contracts. And so that, that is moving forward to council. Actually, it's moving forward to public works, and then it'll come to council shortly after that. So I, I fully anticipate that, that Ms. Perry's motion will create a local hiring ordinance for the city of Los Angeles. Um, the, the, first of all, let me say, the, the action before us is an exemption to the boycott, uh, and, uh, first, let me say that the, the consideration of the boycott, um, is, is very minuscule compared to the broader issues of whether or not to extend this contract. The boycott never intended to impede public safety, never intended to contribute to, uh, to public safety issues. It, it intended to, if anything, support, um, a, a message to Arizona, but not to, to the, uh, negative impact of the people of Los Angeles. So to me, that's not even an issue. Appreciate the police department bringing it forward as an exemption because that's what you have to do, but the real issue is public safety. And the question is, is the program working? Is it reducing, uh, accidents? Is it, is it reducing injuries? Are people safer as a result of the system? And, and there's some, some questions about that, and so I'd, I'd actually like for the department... And by the way, Mr. O'Gorel, thank you for coming back. I know you missed us so much you couldn't stand it without us, especially volunteering your time. I, I didn't realize you loved us that much, but, you know, God bless you for that, too. But if I could have the police department explain why this, at this particular time, this is the safest thing for us to do?
Of course. Oh, okay. Overall, the study that we completed six months prior and six months afterward showed a nine percent decrease at all thirty-two intersections.
Excuse me, officer, could you do me a favor and put that right up to your mouth because we can barely hear you?
Talk about overall stats and about the reduction of fatal traffic.
Yeah, every year, the photo red light program has showed a decrease in red light-related traffic collisions with forty percent reduction in two thousand and eight. In two thousand and seven, there were thirteen serious injury-related traffic collisions as compared to nine in two thousand and eight. That's a thirty-one percent decrease. Most importantly, from two thousand and four through town, through two thousand and six, which was prior to the installation of the cameras, there were nine reported traffic fatalities, five of which were red light-related that occurred at these current photo red light intersections.
But the bottom line is, the, this system is improving traffic safety at these intersections.
Yes, sir. I wanted to point out is that there has not been any red light-related fatalities at any thirty-two, at any of these thirty-two intersections since the cameras were installed. So that's the testament to the cameras.
Okay, so that's not to say that this is the perfect system, this is the best system. It's only to say that if we stop the system now and there's one accident out there, the media will have a field day, but more importantly, we will have, we'll have to deal with our own consciences as to whether or not we might have prevented somebody from loss of life. And I, for one, am not going to take that chance. So I have no problem with the exemption on, on the boycott.
Councilmember Alakon, thank you. I just want to make a point. I, I've asked Sergeant McQuillie to be, to speak in general terms with respect to statistics. You heard earlier when he talked about the six month before, six month after, uh, that was as a result of a, of a commentary by a local station who did their own research regarding six months after, six months before photo red lights and, and traffic collisions. Based on that, we did a study, six month after, six months before, which in reality, when we're looking at it, we're looking at much broader. Six months i- is almost meaningless. There's too many variables. That's why I asked him to, when he approaches numbers, statistics, to go much broader on this and kind of stay away from the six months because it's deceiving, quite frankly.
Now, I think, too, I want to point out is that we did a traffic count at our intersections, and on a twenty-four hour period, there's approximately two million vehicles that travel through these thirty-two intersections on a daily basis. Now, if you times that times three hundred and fifty-six, that's how many lives that we have saved. So it's a testament to the cameras. Also, there's the halo effect with, with the photo red light program. When people see the flash as they're approaching the intersection, and you're there with your family, all right, that has an impact. People are going to slow down and stop for the red light. So it has indirect consequences as well.
Mr. Rosendale.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, um, I was very intent on what Mr. Alakon was saying about safety. Uh, people question the safety. I'd like to just read you a couple of quotes, get some quick action out of here. Okay? KCAL, that's K-C-L-A investigation, found that several ticket camera intersection in Los Angeles have had as many as three times the number of accidents. Uh, so why do these accidents increase as camera enforcement? People see the light flashing, they slam on the brakes. That's just human nature. As a result, more accidents, more rear-end accidents. This is what KCAL said in, in what they were doing. We also know that several studies and other television reports have suggested that the number of collisions at red light intersections have actually increased specifically in the area of this rear-end collision. Does the LAPD account for all these collisions that take place at photo enforcement or just those that involve somebody actually running a red light?
Well, when we did our study, okay, we looked at a variety of different things. We looked at red light, we looked at left turn, we looked at speed falling too closely, unsafe frame changes and turning movement and other related traffic collisions. And obviously, the study is correct. Usually, when you install photo red light cameras, you're going to see increase probably in rear-end traffic collisions. Based on the study that we conducted, we identified thirty-eight traffic collisions, rear-end traffic collisions that occurred prior to the installation of the cameras. And, and once the cameras were installed, there were thirty-eight, uh, traffic collisions. So there was really no increase in rear-end traffic collisions.
Well, like KCAL says here, let me just read it real quickly. At Manchester Avenue and Figueroa Street, accidents more than tripled from five before the cameras were installed to sixteen afterwards. Westwood Boulevard and Wilshire Boulevard tripled from three to nine. At Rodeo and La Brea Avenue, collisions nearly tripled from seven, uh, in the six months before the cameras were installed to twenty the same time period afterwards. Just a suggestion, since the stated goal of this program is safety, should we be looking at alternative, potentially other solutions, adding an additional one or two seconds in timing of the yellow light so that there's a little bit more warning before you jam down on the brakes? Holding all traffic and pedestrian signals red in all directions of travel for a brief period of time to ensure that the traffic is cleared? Have we looked at those aspects, too?
Yes, sir. Can I say a word? Yes. The whole goal of this program is traffic safety, and what we've done, average yellow time at thirty-five miles an hour is approximately ten percent, which would be three point six seconds. We, the city of Los Angeles, because this is a joint effort between the police department and the LA DOT, we took into account that, hey, we wanted to increase the yellow time to give more people ample time to stop for that yellow, red light. So we, we've increased the yellow time from three point six seconds to three point nine seconds at all thirty-two intersections.
Very good. Very good. And what about red at all intersections for a second?
Yes, that's the, uh, currently installed at all thirty-two intersections.
There are, at all of the intersections, we have actually extended the yellow time to make sure that all drivers have the ability to acknowledge and see the yellow, and it was extended to actually a longer period than we normally would give. All of the intersections have an all-red phase so that before it goes green to the cross street, there is a one, uh, at least a one second all-red, uh, for the intersections. The other thing you should understand is the report that, the investigative report that was done, uh, gave collision history that was for everything that was, um, referred to that particular intersection. At one of the intersections, La Brea and Rodeo, there were actually parking lots at two of the corners. Accidents or collisions that take place on private property would still be coded to La Brea and Rodeo. So what happens is the information that was in the investigative report did not necessarily take out those accidents that were not related to the intersection because the investigative reporter did not have the actual collision reports. What LAPD did was they went through each and every collision report and looked at the collision, where it took place, where it was relative to the intersection. Some of the collisions may have been actually two hundred feet away from the intersection, but had to be coded to the intersection because that was the nearest intersection related to where the collision took place.
I see.
And so they did a very intensive study, uh, to try to show what was there and what was actually happening.
And, uh, Councilmember Rosendale, that was done by Sergeant McQuillie and his staff, okay? That hand-pulled each one of those cases to make sure that it, in fact, occurred in the intersection to fit the criteria. So that we would be accurate.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment.
Another thing, too, that affected that story is that, uh, instead of looking at a six-month period, um, prior to the installation of the cameras, um, only if, uh, some intersections, the analysis only looked at like a ninety-day period. So that definitely had a big impact on the percentages that was used for that particular story.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Corret.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question on the cost-effectiveness of how the contract is structured. I was, I was very surprised to hear that we actually were losing money on these cameras because a number of years ago, when I was with the city of West Hollywood, although it was in the early stages of, of the technology, their contract was structured in such a way that the city put forward no money. Um, the, the cameras were installed at the cost of the vendor, and the vendor was then paid back from the tickets. So there was no real exposure for the city, no opportunity to lose money, and only a way for the city to, to gain revenue if, if, if there was a positive cash flow after all those tickets, uh, were processed. Um, now, I don't know if that was because the industry was hungry or at the time the technology was new, they were trying to get it accepted, or whether that's still a way that, uh, that a contract could be structured. But, uh, in, in our current financial situation, um, I don't think we want to add any exposure if it's not necessary. So is there a way to structure a contract that way so that the city has no ability to lose any money in the contract?
Uh, Councilmember Corret, it's something that we would certainly look at since you've raised the issue, but I would just caution us that we'd have to proceed very carefully because the law prohibits, the vehicle code prohibits tying, um, the revenue into, uh, performance, basically. Uh, that would be unlawful because otherwise, there, we would create an incentive for there to, uh, be more citations so that the contractor could increase their revenue, and that's something that the law would prohibit.
Well, as long as you direct them not to do things like tightening up the signal timing so much that it'll create additional tickets, there's no real way. It's not like you have, uh, physical human beings making that decision. A photo camera is a photo camera. If, if people run the light, they run the light. If they don't, they don't. If you structure it properly, there's no way to, to incentivize more tickets. You can incentivize them to make sure they, they process and collect aggressively, and that's not a bad thing. Um, but there's no, there's no inappropriate way that you can incentivize them if, if they set everything up properly. It's just that we take ourselves out of the collection process and out of, out of the possibility of losing money.
Well, the vehicle code does prohibit, um, tying the financial revenue into your contractual language. So we have to be very careful and perceive very carefully, but we will look at the issues that you have raised, and if there's a way to do it, then certainly we would consider that.
And I know it was done, and I don't recall ever hearing that there was a, a legal question. I don't know if they still do that.
I can answer your question. Uh, when the program first went into place and the law was approved, um, there was no limitation on how you reimburse the contractor. Cities like West Hollywood, which you were associated with, and the city of Los Angeles, tied the payment to the contractor to actual, uh, citation fines that were paid in order that the city would not lose money. And that was the... And that was the most physically responsible way to do it. Because of the public concern that the contractor might try to influence the number of citations that were issued, and therefore, the revenue would increase, the state law was changed on January 1st, 2004. It said that you have to pay a contractor a flat fee. And that flat fee is done in order to get around the situation where a contractor might be interested in improving the number of citations that were issued, so that whether the city issues 100 citations a month or 1,000 citations a month, the contractor will be paid the same flat rate, monthly rate, in order to get out of the situation where the contractor might try to influence the city agency to issue more citations.
Interesting, because I'm not sure how a contractor actually could do that.
They can't, but there was a public perception that the contractor would tell the police agency, you know, that's a pretty good violation, go ahead and issue it. They know they did it wrong, they knew they went through the red light, and if you can't see the face of the driver, you have a difficulty going to court if that person were to actually show up in court and fight their ticket, because then you actually can't see the face of the driver if it was blurry.
And since the law was changed, other jurisdictions have tried various methods of doing what you're suggesting, and they have run into problems with their contractual language because of that. So, again, we will consider the issue you've raised. You raise a valid point, but I think at this point, the law may prohibit us from doing that.
Well, just any way that we can figure out to maximize our ability to not lose money as part of this process. I recognize that it's a public safety plus, but if it winds up costing us money, I think that's certainly a factor.
Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. First, I want to thank Matthew McWhalley, Sergeant McWhalley, and his leadership. Traffic in the LAPD is a larger issue, and unfortunately, we don't have the funding to focus on it, but you've been a champion. Also, Greta Gur, I want to thank you. I know you're here out of your heart. And I recognize Pauline Chan and Zachary Mustafa from the department. Traffic next to our public safety is the number-one issue facing us. With that in mind, the one thing that was so important of the 32 intersections, nobody died in a traffic accident there. That is a very important statistic. And when others mentioned that there was a lot of accidents, or Mr. Rosendahl, you talked about Channel 29 and their situation, KCAL, KCBS, Channel 29, two and nine are together. He does it both. He just turns the microphone. You know all that jargon. That's exactly it. The key is this, in the early 90s, when the late, great Teddy Hahn fought for the old red line, which became the blue line, and there were several accidents that occurred along the blue line. And then, people got adjusted, because they hadn't seen moving trains in Los Angeles for several decades. In the San Fernando Valley, just recently, with the orange line, there was tremendous amount of accidents. People did adjust and become aware of it. The thing that's amazing about intersections now, Mr. Gur, is when I hear and I talk to the public, and I do talk, I try to listen to the public, they like the flashing pedestrian head that gives them a little frequency of how long it takes to get through that intersection, which I think helps. And then also, the light at Western and Beverly, which is there, and I remember when we initiated, there was a mobile gas station across the street, the gas was 234 there, from the picture that we took there. That situation makes it safer for people to get home. So, you look at the whole thing, and you have the words of the city attorney, we can't be like a small sheriff in a small town off Highway 99 that has a speed trap. This has to be done for safety. This is what our interest in. This is an important aspect. So, I just wanted to support the police department and the transportation department on this ongoing effort to try to make the streets of Los Angeles safer, because there's nothing more important to know that tonight, someone in this city, there was a horrible obituary in the paper today about the accident in the San Fernando Valley. A much-loved 61-year-old mother at an intersection, when someone hit her from behind, not at one of these type of intersections. But, traffic safety is so important, I rise to support the Los Angeles Police Department, ask for more help for the traffic side there, Chief Repoli, and also the DOT. Thank you.
Want to recognize Mr. Zine.
Are you aware of the court case in Orange County, appellate court regarding photo red light?
The Cleet decision?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And what's the department's position on that? Or maybe the city attorney can answer that.
Well, the Cleet decision basically found that the Santa Ana officer did not have the necessary knowledge of that underlying workings, maintenance, or record-keeping of the photo red light system to lay the necessary foundation for the admission of photographs in court. The Cleet decision seemed to say that officers should be knowledgeable about how the system is maintained, how often the date and time are verified or corrected, the specific procedure for the programming and the storage of the system, and the method of retrieving photographs, et cetera. Our particular program, our officers receive eight hours of training, which will certify them as photo red light operators. They receive training on the crossing guard system, which is the database in which they approve citations on. They learn what cameras are at the intersections, and what each view of the cameras provide, i.e. the contact cameras, signal camera, and the enforcement cameras. There's a segment on the red light camera legislation, vehicle code sections, and they're told the dates of when they were publicized and when they were held, and the enforcement dates of all the intersections. They also receive a demonstration on citation composer and how it works, and they get officers familiar with the main screen layout, which each icon does, the data box information, playing and reviewing videos, and all the ins and outs of the citation composer process.
So, do you believe that the department can withstand the appellate court decision if it does reach another court? Do you think that we have sufficient evidence to sustain these convictions? Concern I have is if it's ruled in a higher court, and we have to return millions of dollars to the folks that have paid those fines, can we withstand that? Because I look at the fine structure, the state receives a tremendous amount of money, we receive, I think, $157 off a $500 fine. I just want to make sure that we're not going to put ourselves in deeper financial situation if we don't have the grounds to withstand the appellate court decision. I know this was an Orange County appellate decision, but if it goes to a higher level, do we have, do we believe we have sufficient grounds to maintain the convictions of those people who've been convicted of photo red light violations?
Councilmember Zine, just first off, we're certainly not conceding that no matter what higher court rule, that we'd have any obligation to return those fines, because there may have been other evidence presented in those cases. So, we don't want to make that kind of concession at this point. But, just further, it is the position of the city attorney's office, and in the Santa Ana case, the court was saying that the red light photos were inadmissible hearsay and could not be used to convict the charged drivers. And what we're maintaining, the city of LA, is that LAPD officers are better trained. Unlike in the Santa Ana case, where the officer was not well-trained enough to be able to provide the appropriate testimony to lay the proper foundation for allowing those photos to come into evidence, we believe that LAPD officers are better trained, far better trained, and can provide testimony that would lay the proper foundation for the introduction of red light photos.
Now, is there a state standard, a police officer standard in training, training requirement, or is it just the department's training in-house? Is there a higher level that's required to testify, to be able to testify in a court on a photo red light violation?
Well, the 21455 of the California vehicle code is very general when it states how much type of training you should have. We go above and beyond that. We provide eight hours of training. Every year, we also provide refresher training for officers, where we have judges, we have city attorneys from the city attorney's office, city attorneys from outside agencies come and provide training on case law updates. We also receive training on updates affecting the manual on traffic control devices, and all of that is provided to the officers.
So, we believe we have sufficient training of our personnel to withstand the questions and to verify that they know exactly what they're doing when these folks are charged with those red light violations?
Yeah, not only that, Councilmember Zine, but also, the training's ongoing. Sergeant McWhalley has training now scheduled in August, refresher training that involves not only the vendor, but also the city attorney and some others, just to keep our officers sharp, to make sure that we don't fall into a trap where they're not well-trained and run into those problems that Santa Ana did.
Okay, and I have another question for the CLA on this matter. With this boycott that is approved by this council, the question is, this is the second time that departments come forward. The first time on the helicopter training, they withdrew that. This is the second one that they're requesting, and I have no problem with approving this. The question is, what other, because the report didn't come through until three weeks after the council took this vote, what other exemptions do we anticipate coming forward on this boycott of Arizona? If the CLA's office can come forward on that matter? I have not seen the report, but I understand the report has been completed, which was requested at the time this vote was taken.
Are you asking if there's any?
No, I'm asking the CLA's office, not the department, if we have the CLA's office here to respond to that. Because I understand a report was made three weeks after the council took the vote, and while we're asking for this exemption, my question is, how many other exemptions can we anticipate coming forward from other departments, other connections we have with Arizona?
Councilman, my understanding is that the CAO conducted a survey of contracts for which the headquarters are located in Arizona. It was my impression that the report had been transmitted to the city clerk. We'll certainly follow up on that. Our office has also contacted the LAPD to determine whether or not any of those contracts they would like to request an exemption for, because it would be a concern relative to public safety. And so, the LAPD is reviewing those contracts, and they're expected to follow up with our office.
And what about fire department or other city departments? Is this a comprehensive report with any and all connections?
The CAO report was intended to be a citywide survey, so we have not had a chance to scrutinize that report yet, but we'll certainly do that.
Okay, because one of the concerns is that we took a vote on the matter, and we're asking for information that hasn't been returned, and now we have exemptions coming through, which obviously is for public safety, which the body of the council, I believe, has a problem, that don't believe we have a problem with. But, the concern is, how many more of these exemptions would be coming through in the public safety or another arena affecting Los Angeles? Do you have the answer?
This is Patty Huber with the CAO. We issued a report to council on June 1st that detailed the contracts that we had identified that had headquarters in Arizona using information from the controller's office.
Okay, I've heard of that report. I have not seen that. I don't know if it's been distributed.
It was issued and submitted to city clerk on June 1st.
I said, the clerk maybe hasn't distributed it yet. Okay.
Can I comment on that report? My understanding is that the report is merely a listing of contracts that are headquartered in Arizona. So, the second step would be for our office to contact the departments to determine whether they have evaluated the need to continue those contracts and for exemptions to be requested. So, there has to be follow-up on the CAO report.
Okay, so, what the department's asking for is an RFP will be taking place, and I understand there's three companies, maybe there's more, but there's knowledge of three companies, two in Arizona, one in Texas. Are you aware of any other companies that deal with photo red light and the research that you've done?
There's about four or five others, but they're located around the US.
Okay, so, there are other opportunities for photo red light, other than the three that have been stated, two in Arizona, one in Texas?
Well, they're smaller companies. Yes, sir.
Mr. Zine, your time is run, if you want this button again.
All right, thank you. So, thank you.
Ms. Hahn?
Yeah, let me just clarify it again. This extension is for, from when to when? When does it start? When does it end?
July 1st, 2010, through April 30th, 2011, 10 months.
And when did this actually expire?
June 30th.
Oh, it did. Wasn't April?
No, no. Well, it expired, at first was going to expire on April 3rd, 2010.
Yes.
And then, when the extension, a contract amendment was approved by council, to extend it until June 30th of 2010. And what we're requesting today is that have that contract, another contract amendment to take it to April 30th, 2011.
And in the meantime, we'll be doing another RFP? When do we expect that to get on the street?
If the council approves that item today, it'll probably go out on the street in July.
And we'll have possibly another contractor onboard by next April?
Yes.
Because I'm not sure we're going to be in the mood to keep extending this one.
That's not the intent.
You know, it's interesting, sitting here, again, the statistics, I think, can be used either way. When I look, and I agree with Tom Labonge, any life saved is certainly worth it, but when I look at the statistics, half of these 32 intersections either had no change in traffic collisions, or had an increase in traffic collisions. So, to me, 32 intersections, half of them either were the same or had more. So, that's not a very good record. And over the life of this contract, we've lost, what, $1.5 million already? We probably will not recover that money. We have a list of 25 of the worst intersections in LA, where we have traffic officers deployed, I guess, during rush hour. None of these intersections were really one of those 25 worst intersections. You know, I'm just wondering, I don't, and again, when it comes back, colleagues, I think we all need to take a good, hard look at what exactly we're getting for this money. To hear you talk about, our officers are the ones that are trained, they go through training, they go through certification, they understand the maintenance of the cameras, when they were maintained, how they operate, so they can testify if they need to, why we issue citations on a red light violation. Looks like we're doing all the work. Basically, they install the cameras, they monitor them, but then it's up to us, right, to look at them, issue citations. Again, if we have to appear in court, we do that. And at the end of the day, we're giving money to the state, we're giving money to the county, and we're losing money. I'm wondering if this might be something we could look at in the future. I just was at a press conference at Nickerson Gardens. We contracted with Motorola. They're installing cameras within the housing developments. There is a live feed that goes directly to southeast, and I think 77th, to be looked at by, you know, law enforcement officers. And of course, in the violation, if there's a violation or a crime, we're able to solve it, they're able to prevent it. I'm wondering, do we actually need this third person involved in this? Is this something we could look at just immediately contracting with the vendor to install these cameras, but the feed comes to LAPD? It sounds like we're trained to do the work. Why do we need somebody in Arizona or anywhere else looking at this, these digital pictures, and then just giving us all the information? We do all the work. Sounds like we're spending money, training officers, we're spending money probably in time, you know, dealing with this, and we're losing money on this. I don't think it's a very good program. I don't think it's a good, I think when we go forward, this RFP better be structured that we don't lose money, and that we figure out how to not enrich some vendor wherever they are. While it's only 32 intersections out of 4,300 intersections that have signals, it just doesn't seem like this is the best use of our resources at this time. Maybe we relook at redeploying traffic officers from those 25 worst intersections to some of these intersections. When was the last time we updated that list, to see whether or not, you know, that's the best use of traffic?
Ms. Hahn?
I know, this whole thing needs to be looked at, colleagues.
Ms. Hahn?
I'm going to go ahead and vote for this extension today, but I'll tell you, it's not an impressive program, in my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Smith to close.
Thank you. Well, that was an interesting conversation, one which we've already had in committee, actually, and all the things you brought out, the things we've said to the department that we want in the RFP. I would point out once again, that Mr. Zine and I pointed all these things out three years ago, this council didn't listen to us, took a very bad contract. You're asking the questions we said would be the false. That's what happened, but it is what it is. So, the question is today, do you turn off the system and just stop doing it until we find something better, or do you continue what we're doing? It's not the best. It can be better. ATS wants to make it better. The city attorney says, no, no enhancements during this timeframe. We could do a better job, but we're not going to, because the city attorney tells us not to do that. So, we go forward with what we got, it's not the best, and the RFP will come back with what we hope will be the best proposal, and that's what RFPs are there to do. Again, what I said at the beginning, today, your choice is you turn the system off, or go forward with what we got, and tell APD, go out, do an RFP, and come back with the best proposal. best proposal. That's what's before you.
So, Mr. Clerk, a yes vote versus a no vote on this matter?
A yes vote supports the Public Safety Committee's recommendations.
A recommendation from the Public Safety Committee is to approve the department's request. With that, colleagues, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Very well, thank you. Mr. Kocorian, you had, Adam, you wanted fourth with, sir?
Number eight, please.
Pardon me?
Eight.
Number eight, number eight, fourth with for Ms. Kocorian. Ms. Hahn, question?
I meant to ask this, one of the things that we've asked all of our vendors during this financial crisis is that everyone lower their cost by 10%. Have we asked this vendor to do that? And what did they say?
We've taken the vote on this matter, it's actually closed, but Commander Chief, if you could take that forward.
Can we have our third one?
The contract does expire the end of this month, they're asking for an extension. While we do an RFP, I think that'd be appropriate, if we can discuss that, but since we already taken the vote on this matter...
Our policy was to ask every vendor to reduce their cost by 10%.
We have asked that, we've completed this matter, we've taken the vote, you got the message, Chief. Thank you.
One last thing, Councilman Zaim, if we could have the contract extension sent to the mayor's office...
I'm sorry, the what?
Fourth with. Fourth with the mayor's office, expires June 30th.
Yeah, I understand, okay, forthwith, thank you.
You understand.
And the comments from Councilmember Hahn, please, on consideration for that. That matter is now closed, we're now going to do public comment. Dr. Williams, public comment, sir.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4011 Fibeber Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Tomorrow, the MTA meets again regarding the State Route 710 North Extension Tunnel, or Gap Closure, as some people call it. Last time, representatives from the City of Los Angeles voted against Mr. Huizar's motion to change things. Hopefully, they will support him tomorrow. However, the whole issue of MTA, Caltrans, and such for the State Route 710 come back to one thing: We can't trust Caltrans, and now we cannot trust MTA to protect the rights of the citizens of the City of Los Angeles. As it stands right now, they are moving forward on the Zone 3, 4, 5, 1, 2, but really, Zone 3, which requires approximately 300 to 500 houses out of southeast El Sereno, plus a construction disturbance that would just basically destroy the whole area. So, all we're trying to do is support the city's resolution of no 1, no 2, and if 3, the portal should be constructed south of Valley Boulevard and not north of Valley Boulevard, so that we can preserve what little we have in El Sereno. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Walter Bechtel. After Mr. Bechtel, Mickey Jackson.
Good morning, still. I just wanted to say something about the boycott. I had already said, I don't think it's wise for politicians to stage a boycott. That's something for the people to do, and as you see now, you're already having to, what they say, backpedal and rethink about your idea to do such a thing. I think it's more for a politician to stand back and remain solemn, and not to involve himself with such a thing. I think even the proposal for such an idea may be a violation of the 11th Amendment, which states that a state of the union and the federal government has no right to interfere with a state's right to prosecute anything in law or equity. You can file an amicus, which you already are doing, but I don't think that it's wise, and I don't think it's, which you might say, proper etiquette to involve yourself with a boycott. That's for community activists, and people, and people, and other people like that. It just creates too many scenarios where you may find it, it's not, like I said, it's already making you look bad, and you're starting to look wishy-washy, you're having to back off of what you've already decided what you do already. So, I just wanted to say again, I don't think it's a good idea to involve yourself with a boycott, that's not for the city or the state or anything like that. If you want to challenge this, I guess you can file a lawsuit, but that's still for the federal government to do. That's not something for a municipality or an adjacent state of the union, that's Arizona, they're over there.
Mickey Jackson.
Chapter 2. The proposed lease LA City has with, is looking at Vandy Camps. In that lease, I wanted to say a little more about my concern about ex-offenders being at that campus. In your own text that supports that motion, is the ex-offenders are listed on page 3 as a target population. I just, I think that's excellent, just not at that location, with the high school students. A few brief words from Mr. Frank are not sufficient assurance for the public. The parents who, and most of all, the children who attend the Vandy Camp site, the charter school, we of the Vandy Camp Coalition have not had the best experience with Mr. Frank's relationship with the truth. We had a meeting with him, where he represented to us that he had never heard that the satellite college there was being canceled, and that he had grave concerns about locating the workforce programs there, because they're designed to accompany a college. We then found out from documents and emails that, in fact, he'd known about it quite a bit before that, had been part of discussions, we have those documents. We need a formal assurance that this will not happen, something in writing, should you be, do, and I hope you don't, and go forward with that lease, it should probably be in the lease. Last, I want to ask you to please do the minimum due diligence, although hardly any of you are listening to me, and look at some documents that we have that surround this issue. It might affect you, knowing things can affect your decisions, at least I hope so. We would not put you through what the college put us through, where we have SIPAs that are over a year old, that are still only partly filled. We will make our documents available, please do due diligence, please at least look at some documents, they could come back to bite us all very hard, it's the least you can do. Thank you.
John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, and of course, Mickey Jackson herself is blogging at the same Hollywood Highlands. You know, why don't you take all your proclamations and all your nauseating self-congratulatory addresses and put them on Tuesday or Thursday? No city business will have Monday, will have Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday for city business. Excuse me, and then make it Monday and Wednesday, and the other day of the week, Thursday. Monday and Thursday for proclamations, the rest of the week for serious business. And I would like to say that Nate Holden was here, you didn't introduce him, one of the greatest city councilmen we ever had. Nate Holden was the best city councilman that Hollywood ever had, and he didn't even represent Hollywood. He was here a little earlier, I'm surprised that none of you took the time to thank former state senator Holden for all of his great service, but his constituents would. Andre Barot, who is the US Attorney, had a little conversation with him on Friday. I asked him to reopen the Monica Garcia criminal investigation. She was paid, all of her lawyer's fees, when she was being investigated by the US Attorney, was paid for by LAUSD, your tax money. Ladies and gentlemen, you know, last Wednesday I was here, I predicted it would be a disaster, huge riot, and there was a huge riot after the game, arrest rise at Lakers aftermath. If you want to contact us, email us at Hollywood DMS, Hollywood D E M S at gmail dot com. Hollywood DMS at gmail dot com. And remember, see you later.
Lona Reyes, please.
Good morning, good morning, council. Can you hear me? Thank you. I'm speaking as an employee of the City of Los Angeles, and I'd like to quote from the great law of the Iroquois American Indian Confederacy. In our every deliberation, we must consider the impact of our decisions on the next seven generations. Are we considering the decision of this layoff furlough impact on even one generation? I think not. And what will our kids think when they see that some city employees are treated more fairly than others? I know this is a landmark decision that you're making here, and LA is at the very forefront of the world, both in the visual news and in the written word, but don't let your example influence others given similar choices to do the wrong thing. Think about a place that you love, any place that you love. Would you like, in this community, your community, for workers or persons that you know and care about to be laid off? If there would be any way that you could prevent this from happening, wouldn't you do it if there was a legal, ethical alternative? I feel as if you're devaluing, devaluing, or trying to devalue human beings. We are related in the city family. The city of LA government is like a metropolis in and of itself. Our work assignments and positions run the gamut, we could be considered a city unto itself. Let's not treat each other as strangers, but care for each other as if we're more than statistics, one to each one. Okay? We're not others, we are separate but unified in our common humanity. Please be humanistic, don't make the mistake of leaving compassion out of your formula, your formula or strategies. Strategies used only on an enemy, not towards a friend or friendly coworker. We can't foresee the future, but whatever your hidden agenda is, decision is, the ends don't justify the means.
Thank you. Daniel Wright, please.
Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard, 90065, on behalf of the Vandy Camps Coalition. Councilmembers, let the record reflect that I today turned in to you, for your review by your staff and the CAO and CLA, a package of documents relevant to the unjust effort of the mayor's office to seize half of Vandy Camps campus for workforce program, executive administrative offices, and a few training rooms. First is a one-page summary of the satellite community college that was planned, designed, and funded for Vandy Camps. Second is an analysis of how LACCD staff spent $7.1 million of Proposition 39 bond funds to solely benefit the planned city workforce tenants selected by Deputy Mayor Larry Frank to lease Vandy Camps. Third is the opinion letter of the law firm of Fulbright and Jawarski that later informed LACCD that tenant improvements paid for out of Proposition 39 funds is unlawful. And last is a copy of a May 26, 2010 LACCD board resolution approving a lease of Vandy Camps with the City of Los Angeles. You will note that the proposed lease of the city calls for the use of $600,000 of federal grant funds to pay for tenant improvements. Federal procurement regulations require that a federal agency give preapproval of tenant improvements exceeding a value of $100,000. Because it is unlikely that these tenant improvements at Vandy Camps were pre-approved before construction, the federal auditors are likely to challenge and require you to pay for those tenant improvements out of the general fund eventually. Since this is a disastrous scheme hatched by the mayor's office to seize a $72 million community college campus, on Friday, you will be looking at a plan that will fund those tenant improvement payments.
Ann Walnam.
Please consider carefully.
Thank you, sir. Ann Walnam.
Good morning, I was here yesterday, that doesn't happen very often. I'm Ann Walnam, 755 Crane Boulevard. I'm also here on behalf of the Vandy Camps issue. I went home yesterday after telling why our community was betrayed. I found the documents that were passed out in our neighborhood announcing four of the community meetings sponsored by Los Angeles CC at Vermont under Dr. Mary Spengler. I was tremendously impressed with Dr. Spengler's leadership. I can only say now that her plans, which we were thinking up until a year ago were going to take place, would have brought an oasis of high values into an area sandwiched between Cypress Park and Glassell Park's Drew Street. In spite of the many good citizens in both of those areas, the news has focused on the gang excesses associated with that area. With the loss of this campus, that chance for a positive force has been lost. Thank you.
Arnold Sachs, our final public speaker, Arnold Sachs.
Thank you, good morning, and thank you, Councilman Zaim, for letting me speak. I didn't know that public comment had already, had been held, hadn't been held. Today is Daily Breeze, LAUSD OKs massive layoffs. And in reading this article, there's nothing in here that says LAUSD authorized massive layoffs and pay raise for employees. Doesn't say that in here, but the city, minimum layoffs, or layoffs, 5% pay raise for employees. The DWP management got a 3% pay raise in February, city employees coalition got 5%. And people will say, well, there's no other, no other program available, but there was E-RIP. Why was E-RIP capped? Would the additional 200 or so layoffs that are being considered right now, would cost $28 million to the E-RIP program? What would have happened, though, if they had been added on to E-RIP, is there'd be no pay raises for the city employees? So, that's really great negotiation by the city council. Another story is, partial tax proposed for libraries could be put on the November ballot, but there was discussion regarding pensions that needed to be qualified in February to make the ballot. So, why can the partial tax for the libraries be on the ballot, but discussion on pension reform not be on the ballot? And then finally, Honest Jan Perry wants to begin a probe of the DWP, and the nefarious way that they lied to the city council and the public, imagine that. Why not begin a probe on why some council members did not know that they were voting for a long-term increase versus a three-month temporary increase?
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. That completes public comment. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
I believe there was a request to take item 30 out of order.
Number 30, please.
And there are cards on that.
Number 30, we have Dr. Williams. Five cards on number 30, Dr. Williams.
Number 30. Basically, this is Vandy Camp, the LACCD's attempt at providing additional space for people who weren't supposed to be there. What are we talking about? We had a bond issue, everybody voted for the bond issue, for a college in northeast LA. What have we gotten? A lot of runaround. What have we gotten now? Still more runaround, but bait and switch, shell games. We're getting confused as to what this facility is going to be used for. It was supposed to be for a college, for northeast LA, not for this, not for that, one thing, and that's what the voters voted on and passed it. So, why are they changing? Why is it such a shell game to live in Los Angeles? Thank you.
Ann Walnam. Ann Walnam.
Ann Walnam, 755 Crane Boulevard, northeast Los Angeles. I want to add to what Dr. Williams just said, a college for northeast Los Angeles. At the time Dr. Spengler put forth her plans, she indicated that research showed the students from Eagle Rock and Franklin High Schools in our area were not attending LACC on Vermont. The satellite campus would provide a centralized location for those students to attend a college in Los Angeles. At that time, and still, a great many students are going from northeast Los Angeles to Glendale and Pasadena City Colleges. And it's interesting to note that Mona Field on the LA Community College Board is a professor at Glendale Community College, and that Glendale Community College has received some funds that were intended for the Vandy Camps campus before it was pulled out as a campus. Thank you.
John Walsh.
John Walsh. For more information on the Vandy Camp deal, and the Vandy Camp deal is full of beans, a million cans of beans, and you know what you get out of beans. That's what we're getting out of the Vandy Camp deal. And if you want to know more about what's going on, as I said, go to Mickey Jackson's blog, Mickey's point of view at HollywoodHighlands.org. The answer is simple. Special counsel meetings on Monday and Thursday for proclamations, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, regular meeting...
Mr. Zion, he still has not talked about this.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Arnold Sacks.
Yep, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. A greening project for this property. Let me just explain that here, there's an article in the Daily Breeze regarding Harvard College, put in solar panels for a greening project. DWP wouldn't let them turn them on because they dispute who owns the house. Yet, in the high ener, in the high desert, Victorville College has a high-energy project, nation's largest concentrator, concentrator, a photovoltaic facility. Be careful what you dream of. Somebody, Dr. Williams, was talking about the way the funding was maneuvered around in this situation. Of course, it's public money. Maneuver it around, spin it around, and then at the end, down the drain it goes. Thank you.
Daniel Wright. Okay, bye.
Daniel Wright, 467 Crane Boulevard, on behalf of the Vandy Camps Coalition. Council members, the item before you will provide some of the funding that will possibly be used to rent and lease the Vandy Camp site through subrecipients of grants from the City of Los Angeles. You are receiving funding from the state. It's being passed down to a set of four tenants: Community Career Development, the Archdiocese and Youth Employment Program, Work, which is a collaborative between the County of Los Angeles and SEIU, and the federally funded Workforce Office of LA City College. If you look at the package, again, that we turned in today on the city's resolution, it says that the lease from the district will be given to the City of LA, and that the City of LA will have the right to sublease. This was a no-bid contract given by LA CCD under a statute, in the ed code, that says that you can enter into an agreement with a city. It does not say that you can sublease to private entities in order to get around the bidding requirements of the state. So you will be asked to approve a lease that is, on its face, a violation of the Education Code. Earlier in April, the district tried to give this lease to Community Career Development directly, and our objections resulted in the item being pulled. Then, after some machinations behind the scenes, we come back with a lease in the name of the City of Los Angeles, and the hidden sublease is Community Career Development, which, by the way, sitting on the board is Marvin Martinez, who joins us in council today. Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Mickey Jackson, our final speaker on this matter.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Martinez is Vice Chancellor of LA CCD. He is the person who put these leases together, which is extremely well documented in our documents. We've only gotten a little sampling that we were able to copy and give you. And our problems with at least an appearance of conflict in him being the person who arranged all the leases and selected CDD way, way back in January, before LA CCD even announced that they were no longer going to run it as a satellite campus. They didn't announce that for months, but Mr. Martinez had already arranged it. In fact, he was put in charge of it. So there's a lot, I mean, it would, a lot to this that y'all need to know a little more about. So I hope someone appropriate looks at documents and, as I said, will make them extremely available to you. Ms. Han, thank you very much for your insight into the previous matter. And I believe you did get your answer when you asked if they had been asked to reduce 10%. Because if the answer was yes, someone would have just said yes, right over Mr. Zion, because it would have made them look very good on TV. And silence is an enormously loud answer sometimes. Thank you.
That matter is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
And there was a request to take item 31 out of order as well.
31, we have some cards. Dr. Williams, 31.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, northeast LA. Same one as 30. So what is the situation? We get a vote for a northeast LA college, and what do we get? We find that they don't have enough money to run it. We don't have enough money for this. We don't have enough money for that. This is a fairly common problem throughout most of the city and regional agencies. We forget about the operations and maintenance. Now we're trying to patch together another situation to fund some parts of it. Why? Is this the best use of these funds? Is this the best location for these funds to be used? We don't believe so. It should have been a college. It should still be a college. These operations can be relocated elsewhere. We'll take them over in El Sereno. Thank you.
Arnold Sacks. He passes. Thank you, Arnold Sacks. John Walsh.
John Walsh. You know, we're not against everything. Well, we'll take a look at what this is. It's stimulus money to keep subsidized summer youth employment program going. That's, on the face of it, an excellent idea. So, you know, if you get up here and say everything is wrong, then you lose your credibility. Sometimes you do things right. Sometimes you do things wrong. This is excellent. And if you want to email me and disagree or agree with myself or Mickey Jackson, we have a Hollywood Dems, Hollywood and N-D-E-M-S at gmail dot com. Thank you.
That matter is before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
Item one was called special for cards.
John Walsh. Number one, sir. John, thank you. He passes. Sundar Chawla. Sundar Chawla. No Sundar Chawla in chambers. That matter is now before us, colleagues. Mr. Cardenas.
Can you call that name again?
Chawla.
One of the parties involved, this is an assessment. I just want to make sure that it's clear that they were called.
GNP Investments. They're not here. That matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 17, called special for cards.
Number 17, Dr. Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, northeast LA. Highland Park Transit Village. Here we go again. How many times are we going to have to have the community affected by this particular project? Maybe it would be wise to get the neighborhood councils involved in this at an early stage, maybe as a member of the agreement within this. Community impacts? Yes, there are some, but it takes too long to get it through the neighborhood council agenda. People have shown up for this project over and over and over again. We're not opposed to the particulars of the project. We're opposed to the fact that it doesn't work in this particular location and the way that they've been doing it. They even tried to get a Los Angeles Community College into it in order to make it viable. What's wrong with this one? But there's also two other stations within the Highland Park area. So we would like to participate, and we're more than willing to help. However, it's not included within the organization that's been attempted before, and it does not appear to be included within this. Public participation and transparency is vital to transit villages. Thank you.
John Walsh, number 17. And our final speaker will be Arnold Sacks on number 17.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Over one-half million successful server requests in the past six months. Again, these are these transit villages that never get built. McCormick Baron has been advertising its deal with the city at MacArthur Park. Do you see anything there? That station's been there for almost 15 years. In fact, the ridership, which is supposed to be the key to everything on Metro Rail, on the rail system, is terrible. 298,000 boardings on the Red Line was their target. That was their prediction by the year 2000. It's 145,000 10 years later. The goal line is the ghost line. The ridership, since they extended the goal line into east LA, is approximately 500 to 1,000 additional riders which produce 2,000 boardings. Remember, they inflate everything by 100%. They double everything by using the term riders when they should be using boarders, boardings. If there are 140,000 rider, riders, that's only 70,000 boardings. Go on the goal line. It is, and incidentally, as in all of your systems, half of the ridership are people on senior citizen passes, student passes, and disabled passes. In other words, the poorest members of the community are forced to take it because the goal of the bus rider is not better bus service. The goal of the rail rider is not better rail service. That's the politically correct BS that you get from people who don't take it. The goal of anyone who doesn't have a car is to get a car because of the freedom involved.
Arnold Sacks.
Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. My concern here, actually, is with the name change. Because this, although this is the Highland Park Station, doesn't really refer to the Highland Park Station on the goal line, which originally was the blue line, to be built by the Pasadena Blue Line Construction Authority. Oh, and by the way, in case you missed the point, when the MTA awarded the funding to extend the goal line foothill extension, they awarded it to the Blue Line Construction Authority, $800 million, over $800 million. But the goal line's got the credit. So my concern is, here's a name change from the Highland Park Transit Village, to the Highland Park Transit Village from the Avenue 57 Transit Oriented District Project. I wonder if it was that project when it was the blue line, and then when they magically changed it to the goal line, then it became this. Now it's referred to as the Highland Park Transit Village. You need to pay attention to, as they used to, as they said in the Watergate, follow the money.
That matter is now before us. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ayes.
Next item, please.
Item 19, called special for cards.
Um, Arnold Sacks.
Thank you. You're looking to provide an agreement with the Los Angeles State Building Authority for the sale of the Ronald Reagan Building and the Juniper Sierra Building. And I'm surprised. This is not a time to sell this building. This is a time for the city to be buying these buildings. They have qualified renters. They can get market rent, unlike the downtown area here at, what the heck's the name of the square here? El Pueblo. They can get market rent, unlike what they're getting at the airport for the taxi cab drivers who are paying a private company to provide a snack vehicle for the workers. This is an opportunity to get income coming into the city for the next 30 years. Buy the buildings.
John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You know, this, this agenda is a bigger waste of time than your proclamations because this stems from Arnold Schwarzenegger's failed attempt to get the state, and he's on his way out anyway, he's gone by January, to get the state behind selling all these major buildings, including the, and instantly, go inside the building. It's very well-built. It's one of the nicest buildings in the, in the Los Angeles area. We sell it to one of his business friends, and as we know, they're the people who pay for all his trips overseas. We sell it to him in a sweetheart deal. In fact, it's never going to happen. This is the fifth modification to a joint exercise of powers agreement. It's, forget about it. No one is going to sell this building. The Republicans are out. Jerry Brown is coming back. Goodbye, Whitman. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. That matter is before us for a vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Please send number 34 with. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Council has motions for posting an referral.
Post and refer.
The desk is clear.
Announcements, colleagues? Any announcements? See none? Adjourning motions? Any adjourning motions, colleagues? See no adjourning motions? Mr. Corretts, adjourning motions at all? Please stand. Adjourning motions? Please stand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to adjourn today in memory of Ned Munger, who died June 15th at age 88. A longtime geography professor at Caltech, he was one of the nation's first and most influential scholars studying Africa. He was the first Fulbright Fellow in Africa and was a fellow with the Institute of Current World Affairs and worked and studied all over the continent back in the '50s. He later worked with both the Peace Corps and the US State Department. His particular academic interest and personal passion was race relations in Africa. He was president of the Leaky Foundation, where he started the Baldwin Scholarships to assist Africans working to obtain advanced degrees. He also founded the Cape of Good Hope Foundation, which has raised millions for black universities in southern Africa, and worked with the US South African Leadership Program, a prominent anti-apartheid group. In addition to his international work, Ned was involved in our local community, founding Caltech's Friends of Beckman Auditorium, and serving as president... founding Caltech's Friends of Beckman Auditorium and serving as president of the Pasadena Playhouse. Ned Munger was, in the end, the consummate professor. He knew and loved Africa and inspired decades of students to share his love. He survived by his wife of 40 years, Ann Boyer Munger, and his daughter, Betsy Owens.
Any other adjourning motions? See none? This concludes our meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.